I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, we're here, Deputy Collins, we come to you this evening, we thank you for your great blessing that you spoke on us individually as well as a community. We're thankful for just all that you do for us, we ask that you be with us in this meeting tonight, lead and guide our actions taken and words spoken that they might help further this community in a way that would be satisfying to the community and building together. We ask in the name of your name.
Welcome tonight, um, and there's John Bailey, Dave Harding, myself here at the Ender and our, um, court treasurer, Sandra Thompson, so, um, can I see me now?
Yes.
Who's here? We have an agenda here, we'll go on around and list here, so, did the motion for our approval of that explained office and utility business? So who? Second? Dave made a motion, John seconded it, all of them say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Create a new office? Any doubt for Jason?
First of all, glad to be back to work after being off for both those seven and a half weeks for knee surgery. And you're not alone, there has a big reimbursement for all it's gone, that's a lot of what was taken care of. We did get, like everyone's saying, P and B completed our paving for the Community Crossings Grant, all of that project is totally complete. So, this parade route for Apple Festival will be pretty smooth this year. I had a meeting, I had a meeting with FEMA, uh, two weeks ago, I believe it was, uh, they're supposed to be sending me some documents for more information, more specific information of possible reimbursement to the town for damage from the spring when we had flooding. We had some load station issues, we had some road money issues due to flooding, and then followed, um, I have been in contact with the actual vendor for our road salt for this one, because for the last two years, I've committed to town for eighty tons and a hundred tons of road salt, and vendor never called to do delivery, and I couldn't get any information on who was supposed to deliver in this district. But I have been in contact and we are committed for, yeah, I believe it's eighty tons, so we will have lots of road salt for this one. Um, hopefully we don't need it.
You want to be on the nap?
I'm saying from what I see in the early forecasts, we're gonna need it. As you guys know, our super machine bit us, um, I know it's on the agenda for something later tonight to go to purchase another one, but just so everybody knows, yeah, ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand dollars to purchase a new one, but we'd be looking at forty thousand dollars to repair a twenty-six-year-old piece of equipment. It doesn't make much physical sense to put that on the road into a piece of equipment that only we already spent between seven and eight thousand dollars on this spring. One of the privacy fences up around the outside, XBAC units of the park has been replaced, the other one we started working on today, Kevin Byers is supposed to come in and service that unit tomorrow, prior to us getting the fence back up, just that way, one last time it has to be taken back down. Once they get that done, we'll complete the fence around that, and there'll be either eight or nine ROTC kids at pool, Sunday, two o'clock, and I'll just put a camera on. I think that's all I got for now.
I did have one concern, uh, the script on Lincoln Drive and the desert street and the pool with all those puddles up there, is that?
It's a county road, that is not town road. I'd say you asked that question a couple of weeks ago on a text chain or email chain, Nate and Gary both answered that that is county, because you guys had talked to the county about one time splitting the cost of changing that road. So, you guys want me to go fix a county road? That's...
Who's been patching it in the past? Has the county been doing it?
We patched it until I submitted for paving, I rejected by Endop for being able to grant eligible, because it is listed in the county's regulatory, not the town's.
Well, it's not much better than what the parade was up there, if they're working on it right now. And it's, it may be on the county line, but it's, it's...
Yeah, that's the date.
Well, I'm talking about Lincoln's line on that. It's been bad as well.
It is bad.
Do you have some connection with that commissioners? Well, at one time, we, last year, we had a, an agreement we were trying to go have, and I think you got us a bid of sixty thousand dollars, and then they had committed thirty thousand to do it. And then, I think we had some bad weather come in, we, we didn't vote on it, but, uh, we moved on to it, but we had some bad weather come in, we weren't able to, uh, fund our, our project, so, um, I'd be willing to go back and see if we could do it again, if that's something we could do, we'll say.
We also, I don't know if this, if there's any interest in this or not, but we also had conversations at one point about the town annexing that area. Where it's gonna require quite a bit of surveying if there's something, if there's something screwed up about the legal script over there. Can't remember exactly, but, but yeah, I mean, if the county's still willing to do that, I can't remember why we didn't do it, but yeah, I could, it was weather, but I know, I know we talked about that previously.
Back when I was talking to the, uh, president and commissioners, I told him that, uh,
Talking to Richard?
We'd like to take it.
Which commissioner were you talking to?
Uh, Nathan, Nathan.
Yeah.
He said if the town wanted, uh, he said we'd just go to the county attorney and he wrote it in paper.
No, we, we can get it.
I think that would take that hold on for the council, I think if we were to agree to do it, but it's something, if someone's gotta fix that road, it's, it's not gonna fix itself, and it's terrible to drive. I would suggest, see the project for now, and then we can look into the technicality where it's not good.
Does the county ever, I mean, has anybody ever asked the county to address it, and they've said no, or what's? I mean, it's county road, I mean, county all of your painting.
The county attorney said it really needs to be surveyed to, in order to be able to officially do something with the road. And he talked like that the, the surveyor that does survey for the county was like two years behind in...
Sounds about right.
The survey, and so, uh, yeah, I just started coming up on road blocks, and I said, we thought we could get that blacktop, was that two years ago?
It's either two years or three, I don't remember which one.
Whoever, whoever was going to pay, we probably planned at that time, they checked our, uh, road inventory, and that's not part of our road inventory, so we couldn't stick that in.
In nothing but that.
I guess that would be my suggestion.
Same county, we'll patch it for now, and if we can decide what we're gonna... It's gonna take a while to do whatever, we can try to, you know, move, maybe give it to us.
Something that's gonna be against it, it was passed several months ago. And if they won't do it, yeah, I guess we probably do something good. They need to do it.
All right. Will Lee and Maylene find far the end? Hold on up. Who, Sarah?
My report might be shorter than that, I really have nothing to report, I've been checking, you know, messages, emails, just having, Sandra just said that she would have numbers probably complete next month, so we're excited to see that, but... That's about it?
I'm wondering about the pool cover being put on, but Jason answered that, did you say it was Sunday, what time?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Hey, Brandon?
You're welcome, and that's easier for you.
Enclosures, you put them around each, uh, back, is there a door? Easy access. It's removing six screws. And I already talked to Kevin and Jeremy Dickert, the road chairman, and they were okay with these six screws, make one complete, that's how it goes, and it's the side that is, where the lines that comes in, where, uh, curbs are at, everything that they have to, you know, to do service or any repair work.
Let me just, so three things quickly, there's a lot, I was just waiting for you to ask the question. The Apple Festival committee did donate, and I confirmed with Sandra, she did receive the twenty-five hundred dollars, and a call with three furniture companies, three, uh, three furniture companies that make the Hollywood furniture, Graeber, Keller, and Country Woodworking. Country Woodworking gave the best estimate, and I want you guys to know, a thousand dollars of each, and I talked with Will Wagner this morning, he has them ordered, I think they'll be here by the Apple Festival. Uh, there are three low-hanging limbs that need to be cut, uh, because of the vendor tents, Jason came, the street department cut those, why should we do?
Yeah, we have two weeks left to do the part.
I also want to thank the street department for keeping the park looking nice on the mowing, and I see the new HBA C fences around them, they shut us, they did, they were good, kind of old. Uh, someone also painted a, they, it wasn't chalk, they painted a heart lettering on one of the picnic tables, and it just painted this, I got a picture of it, uh, this spring, and they painted over that, Jason from the street department had painted over it.
Should be two on that.
She got paint left, and that's what I thought. With the camera there, that shelter house recorded.
It's not that long, it's been a while.
And I just found that...
I'm not sure what the storage time is, I'm asking, yeah.
And you said you got it lengthened, but I don't know by how much. I don't either, you got it increased, but I don't know by how much. I thought about putting it on Facebook, but sometimes when you notice something like that, and you get somebody else to do it, so, all right, it's a, you know. I got two estimates for fifteen months for the park, five little kids, uh, one for ten dollars each, and Vex for eight dollars each, uh, we're pressing that we, uh, we can put Vex to larger ones and cheaper, and seventh grades, fifth grade teachers gonna arrange for the graders to play the park. Now we just keep going, maybe?
Maybe fair warning.
Okay. Hard questions, uh, the men's liquor store dispenser was in a concrete container there where he was to put cigarettes, and that elephant shelter house, it was empty, that's why they could tell who did it. I don't know, I was wondering, but we thought just to have, I did notice you got them in one bathroom, had just plastic bottles where you could see, and they're empty, it would just be replaced, I mean, you could throw them.
So, you got it? Got told to put the...
Methylone zone?
Meth, back on the wall, and the man in sex wear, he got the back there.
I put it back.
No, I mean, because he got replaced this spring.
I saw it was different.
And we used to have these plastic bottles and hand soap, but there was a problem, and they just disappeared out of the trash. I mean, that, that's just, that's what happens, just like there used to be someone that would come down and unload the toilet paper, and then shove it in their front pocket, and made with two rolls of toilet paper.
And, uh...
I find, I find that that lady just stopped doing that.
Good, I'm glad. And then, Jason lets know the, uh, changing table, and the men's restroom was broken last week, what's, can you fix it, or you go over and do it?
It's already gone over. Hi.
I think it'll be delivered tomorrow maybe.
I'd say, I wanna say Jennifer told me Wednesday delivery, maybe, I think, uh, that was Thursday, and she...
All right, it'll be delivered tomorrow.
Thanks. And lastly, uh, Tom and Laura's been busy and just haven't been able to get to the, to the tractor tires, but they also wanted to, if you guys wanted to give input as to where they're put, hard work to do, Jason, I'm, he was wanting to put Vex and where the sand eagles are in that area, so we had them on.
I don't know how many they're putting, put down there, and...
I can't put a lot, I'm hurrying, I don't understand there.
I don't even know if they put one, I mean, that's gonna be a big hole to bring that out there, and then put one in there, I just don't think it'd be worth it, but that's the need.
Well, what do you have, Jason, do you think, if you fix that, and I can go?
They could look at it themselves, yes.
Do you wanna look at it, let me know what you think?
I don't remember, oh, they told me, rear tires on the tractor.
Yeah, the big tires, yeah.
It's a pretty big hole.
It's not, it's not gonna happen far enough.
Part of that is gonna depend on what size tire, I mean, because there's multiple sizes.
Okay, and I don't know on size, just make a statement.
I mean, it could be this wide underground, or it could be...
I think a bit.
I mean, I, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, it's too much of a variable to say.
Sure, let me, let me get the size, I'll let that, I'll get the size.
Size and location are good.
Okay. Okay, that's it?
One, uh, one comment, uh, I attended a birthday party in the South Shelter, I was just passing, my uncle Jack there was nine years old, so I could get to see him. Uh, several people there, and they were admiring the artwork that's inside on the walls of the shelter, and they were asking me, who did it?
Art class.
We had art class. And they probably should put their name or, you know, identify who, who did it, so people they can appreciate who did it, but it is, it's very nice, and a lot of people were very impressed with it, so, uh, I don't think, just put, you know, they have a corner, whatever art classes, whatever.
And it's been that way, I've just gotten on the hard board, and this is my fourth year, so, been that long that it's been, it's been, it's been quite a while, I would say seven or eight years, maybe.
Honestly, I think it's longer than that.
Other than that, I mean, it's been...
I wanna say, uh, that art work was there when I started, ten years ago.
Really?
And then, you know, when they took the two windows out, the, put the two window panels in, in that South Shelter House, that's where the artwork that's on those walls came from.
Oh, okay.
It just got moved from to one of the sheltered us.
It was still the art class, I was still art class, do you know?
Wyatt. You could have emailed Woodruff.
I thought it was Wyatt.
I would tend to say it was, way back in the...
Even if it wasn't, it was probably the...
I'm saying, maybe he's been on support wise, certainly.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it has been.
But he may have been involved.
I'll email Wyatt and find out, and then see if I can get it.
Several people, actually, you did it, and I didn't know, but, so, we're...
One time Wyatt mentioned making college for them, college for them, and, uh, all I'm doing, I see.
It could maybe be the next art class project.
Yep. So, I'll email Wyatt.
Thank you. Another question would be in the restroom, a week, about you for painting, updating pictures, changing or pictures?
I've had the Chris paint that, they didn't paint the mission, they were painted last year.
I said that was re, um, about six, seven years ago, that bathroom was remodeled, it's when the bathrooms were actually put in the shelter house at that time also. That, because there's, I mean, mirrors are good.
When, when we're talking bathroom, there's, then there'd be, uh, the door, and the, uh, the closure to the door, that door is, is slammed shut, so, I don't know if it can be adjusted, or if it needs to be replaced, or what.
You're talking South Shelter.
South Shelter, we have, I'll take a look at that.
And put it up for mine, please? All right.
Finally, question would be, do we wanna buy local, or do we wanna get it out of there? Almost thirty dollars to buy a mirror.
And I'd say, but you'll have to get more of them now, I can buy them.
If they can, if they can, just bring it up. Should buy local myself. Okay, my first question, I have six to pick up. All right, on the old business? You know what, this, I haven't done anything with it, and I'd say the bear just, you know, too long, yeah. All right, but we do, we do have a great focus on that.
I guess I would prefer that we maybe have a, uh, I don't know, at some point in time, we could, uh, probably can, to get his final, uh, recommendations, so if maybe, whether to these be changed or adjusted, uh, we could do that.
All right, twenty twenty-six budget, have a few budget during business hours. Any questions folks have, or any community, Sandra's ready and willing to answer those and explain, any questions they have come up with, correct?
Yes, sir.
Moving on down to Judy, right there, back to the...
Okay, um, as normal, it's the park marked on Monday before, because we're trying to mark park on Monday, Monday night. I think, one night this week, Michelle and Darren Birch are going to go down and try to see, play around the new sidewalk, so, um, is going to, anybody has the tricappa, they're going to be involved in the, in the mood, and... But, um, uh, so we need, um, the four-way stops at Spring and, and somewhere in Spring, break Franklin, um, no parking the whole weekend on Spring Street. And I guess on, on Franklin for, for a, or middle of the break, and Franklin, and, um, permission for the tractors and the cars, uh, both cars. We have...
Is the parade starting on the South Amican?
Yes. And for some reason, it started an hour earlier, I'm not sure why, so...
What, what time? I, I think it's, there, aren't some vendors staying, uh, over on Sunday?
Yes, there'll be, there's a few vendors that stay, um, a lot of vendors, um, think it's easier to take care of, take down on Sunday, too, I mean, when you're not quite as tired, and, um, we're gonna probably make some people mad this year, you may hear it, but we had people last year, um, that tore down early Saturday in the middle, and part of that was, like, the sheriff's department, and the, it was, and if they tear it down again this year, they're gonna find themselves in a more, uh, distant spot than right in the middle of the park, I think it was the Republican stand, the, there was three stands right there, there, uh, on the front of the basketball court, and just left the sandbags, and so, um, that's...
Is that gonna announce to the vendors?
It will be as they come in.
I definitely would be happy to, yeah. You said the parade's gonna be an hour earlier?
I, I think it is.
Was it last year, wasn't it, it started later?
Yeah, I think it did, too.
One, you said? Oh, okay, I thought, okay.
I suppose it helps get the kids back to the park for, to get their last ride in, or whatever.
At seven twelve this year.
And they, and because of that, then, the, uh, the, uh, morning services have been, they're starting at ten thirty this time. And I think we, we'll just stick with the six hundred and fifty sandbags like we had last year, the prisoners will be here on Monday to, uh, fill the sandbags, so we'll need the, I guess, will you bring them down on pallets?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, and I just want them on like a couple of pallets or something.
Maybe on like fourteen pallets, six hundred and fifty sandbags.
Well, the, I, I need them all down by the bathrooms, I can't have them spread the whole way, because there's not enough room for people to get in, we moved them all last year, I had to go up to the school and get help.
You're gonna, you're gonna run into an issue with that new sidewalk, people driving in, they don't need to be driving across the sidewalk.
Well, we've already discussed that, and that's why we have insurance, um, if, if, if the sidewalks crack, we will fix them.
We went through that last year, I think we went through that last year.
Yeah, and I would say it put a lot of rebar in that, so that sidewalk would be...
Yeah, that was over by the gate, the way I understood it, that wasn't going...
All the way.
From sidewalk to sidewalk across there, that was just over by the gate, and so that...
Yeah, I knew I saw it.
Equipment in the park to work on the tree, to work on something.
But, um, um, so I, I can't, I just can't handle this. So I, I can't, I just can't have the sandbags all the way down through there. I got to be able to get people in. So now you, um. You still want us to put the sand, the pallets back in the bathroom? Or are you gonna come and get them?
I'm coming to get them.
Okay. Of course, we already talked about, um, the. No parking on those, all the streets for Sunday. And I, Kevin, well, is Kevin coming down Thursday morning?
I'm saying I've already talked to him. I don't, he'll be there. Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursdays. He'll be there sometime that way to check for that.
And they want movable barricades on Harrison Street. Is Harrison Street the one by the cone station there?
Harrison Street.
Okay, the reason they want movable ones there is because we bring in the. Uh, some of the food vendors come in that. Direction and it's just. That's the reason. We'll have, and we need barricades, uh, going. We're going down Sunset Drive. And I will, I always take a, I have a letter. Uh, to Sunset Drive's, uh, residents that. We will open up the back road for them to get in and we'll. Try to cause as little problems as. The runners will of course be. Park, or parking down here at the fire station for the run. And since I've mentioned the run, uh, I need to ask for permission for the. Shawnee Deator to paint the. Repaint the finish line. It's getting kind of fatty and.
It's not very well, it's getting underbaked.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's there at all.
That's right.
I don't, I don't think so.
Uh. And, um. The hippo to be re- removed and the other fountain by the shelter house, of course. Um, speaking of the hippo, uh, Brian's gonna be. Looking at that again. Maybe this winter. I don't, somebody told us that was looking.
Say, I asked him about the last two years. There's a lot of cracks in it. On a locking hippo.
So.
I mean, I know he had a lot of hours.
He did.
In working on that hippo.
But it's kind of close to his heart and our heart, too, because that, the. My father-in-law and his dad worked together. Or I think they, I don't know if they bought the hippo or they did. They put a lot of work in that hippo, so that was. Um. And of course, the barricades that, at, man, and the baseball diamond. Uh, barricades for the run. Seven five foot snow fence for the Noel. Um, we. The Noel is going to be full of vendors. We've got, um. Hopefully, I got a check back in with them, that the National Guard is bringing. Some big piece of equipment and, and, uh, football toss and. Something else. I think we're having. The donkey pink is going to be there and I think, uh, Sherry and Julie will, so the Noel is going to be. Full. And then you're gonna have a, a place for us to throw sandbags on Saturday night and Sunday.
Saturday afternoon, late afternoon, early evening, all the river. The front, um, waste all on the parking lot. Hopefully be able to park it.
Over close to whenever.
Right up close to where the barricades get set, so they don't have to carry. And, and, and you have to come in back.
Of course, we'd have to move all the barricades again from Sunday for the parade. And the swings. Can remember either to take those down or rattle them.
They'll come down.
Okay, different levels. Well, we had, I don't know, that's some old relatives. Cones on fifty-four. Everything else is pretty. Uh, they, they said they would rather have a police car for a gate at. Spring and Harrison instead of that big truck because it gives them more room to turn around with the tractors and. People can see there. I, that was. And if we don't have an extra police car, um. I think the sheriff's, I think the sheriff's probably will. Well, when you go to, if you're, go to Florida down in the Keys. If, I think every old, they don't jump their police cars. They just set them around to stop the slow traffic. And I've already talked to, to the department about security, so I think we're. I think we're set.
Will we shut the gazebo off?
We usually, um, we usually do because we don't like the kids, I mean, if you don't, it just turns into a playhouse.
Right.
Them jumping off and.
One thing you've got on here is keys for the park. For water beds and stuff.
I have keys for all that anyway.
The, the beds will be turned on. And the bathrooms will be locked, the hose will be underneath to go.
Okay, so don't you have the hose for the?
Just like I have the last three or four years, the hose, I have the hoses sitting there that shut off.
And, and I'm not sure, last year, I don't think that applicant even used it.
I would say, I don't think he ever hooked up last year.
But just in case he, he does.
Judy, I think the carousel out through gazebo.
Oh.
We shut the.
Oh.
I can, I can shut the breaker off to it.
Yeah.
And then run some caution tape around it.
Yep.
And I got a small piece of snow fence I can put around it there.
Can make sure they put a little sign. She has to go and just say that over. Shut the breaker.
The breaker not ordered.
I think that would make sense to turn it off for this.
I also think the gazebo should be also.
Gazebo hasn't been for the last two or three years.
I knew it was last year. Those kids, do you guys have, use that as a handout?
All right, okay. I got a problem here. If you use a police car, they will not give the fire department a key to it. They can't guarantee that a key will be there all the time. We have a key to the truck in between the trucks. So whatever apparatus goes down there has a key to move that device. If there's a fire down in there, we can't wait ten or fifteen minutes for a police officer to get there to move the car. Because they won't let us have the key. That's why we always use the town's time truck. So. It's a police car.
Who cares?
It's not radios and everything else again.
Yeah, I think the white one's good stripped.
Huh?
I think that white one's been stripped most of the time.
I mean, you know, if they want to give us a key so we can keep it in. Our first two responding apparatuses, that's fine, having a problem. But that's why we always use the time truck is because then we can get in the support. We've got a key and then. Last year, we used the back one down there.
On. Sunset. Sunset. Village. Actually, because. It was in July, I believe, when you went to pick those water barricades up. I said.
I'd say, have you looked at those and?
I, I've looked at them. I, I gotta pull them back out and. Scrap for paint, you know, T O B, town, one year long, just so we don't have. Anyone say, oh, those are mine, you know, just gonna. Sorry, I'm gonna stencil that on there real quick, but, um. What I would probably do this year is I will set, cause I, we have.
Fifteen of those and then wherever you have the.
So I was gonna say, I thought fifteen more. We have fifteen more water barricades available to use, so. Hopefully, we will not be using concrete barricades in, in place because. They're great for stopping traffic, but they are dangerous moving. I mean, let's just be honest. You got three thousand, four thousand pounds hanging out there on, on the chain, on front back over, moving them around. They're, they're dangerous. But. Water barricades with wooden barricade in between. And so, all you have to do. I got a ten foot thing. I'm not, I was gonna ask, how far do you need?
Ten foot.
You'll have at least ten six.
Okay. And there is.
A little lighter than there. You'll have, you'll have at least ten six. Matter of fact, I think I've got one crossbow that's hanging, and it's twelve foot. You might get that.
That.
Because, like I said, hopefully.
We always hope that we don't have to do that anymore.
Exactly. Hopefully, no one ever has to move stuff, but.
I didn't mention that we also, for our emergency plan, and we also have a fog to get into the. School. Because basically, all we have is the shelter houses and. We found that one time when we had a tornado warning, um. And Dan Ceasing was here then, he was unplanned and he, after that, he's always make, always make sure we have, uh. A, a way to get into the school and, and, uh, the superintendent now will, he gives me a, uh. A fog to keep in our box down there to get in.
I think that's the, uh, oldest location for the religious services in the event.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay. So, I guess. Any issues you see on the list? Guess we have to find this and get the question. The only other thing would be, they're, they're not being street sweepers. Cause the town does not have one. And working one, and it's five thousand dollars to rent one per week. Anything else on your debt that you received? No, I mean, that's. I'd make a motion that we approve the, the list based off of comments, uh, I guess. We'll need to see about. Getting a key to the fire department. But, but that would be the. I guess. That's, uh, understanding with the gate number twenty-six, the police car with, with the key to the fire department for a quick. Rule. Though I'd recommend approval as presented by Judy, like. Apparatus, from Secretary. John made a motion to approve that. Needed a vote for the apparel. Dave's secretary, the law office, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Judy, you have a question, I was like, when are they delivering pork butts?
Brothers. Or pot pan? I'll pop it out and get it.
I just, I didn't even know when they're delivering those because at that time, bathrooms will be locked.
Um. I'll, I'll find out until Sardner.
When's your next, uh, meeting?
Um, but. Fourteenth, eighteenth, was that what, uh? Fourteenth. It's, uh. And, and I did want to invite. Always. Fourteen six. Uh, I did want to invite you to come at the meetings if you want, and anytime, we would, you know, we appreciate. Having you come and. Here are our problems. And help.
Is that at the South Shelter House? What was the date that they gave you?
Yes, so.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, but six, six. Yep, South Shelter House.
All right, that it. We'll walk down to the sewer machine. Ninety-nine seven, first of the numbers.
Got a couple of different, um, estimates for, uh, quotes for a new. Sewer machine. New to the other ones, cost repairs and, uh, keeping the rentals and everything, so. There's a couple of different estimates here, uh, one for a hundred twenty-five thousand and the other one's ninety-nine thousand seven hundred. And have some trade-in values on, on, just for both of them, but, um. So.
Trade-in rental, just looks like. I would make a motion that we purchase a new sewer machine from Five-O-Two Equipment LLC for ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. I second that motion.
Dave made a motion, John seconded for the purchase of a new, uh, sewer machine for ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, um, on favor.
Aye.
Both?
Thank you.
Through the zero or through? Needed item. Next one, our intended areas are repairs to the evidence room. We've received quotes before and. I failed to bring anything tonight, so I think they were close to what. Do you remember?
Um. For Kevin Myers and Serv Pro was approximately seventy-seven hundred dollars.
Okay. Take a motion to approve that.
Sandra, are we good making a motion? Cause we're still waiting for, the Serv Pro estimate was back in January, I think, yeah.
Yeah, you're good, huh?
We're making it for not less or not more than a certain figure.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's a significant amount. Yeah. Make that one. You know, I make it higher in case it, just in case Surf Pro comes into the honors.
Kevin won.
I'll make the motion, Kevin? I'll make the motion that we, not to exceed nine thousand dollars. Kevin Byers and Surf Pro for the, for the, for the evidence room. I'll second that.
They made a motion to, for repairs for evidence room provided by Surf Pro against Kevin Byers for King Coolings, not to exceed nine thousand dollars. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero, three to zero, pass. So, all in favor? Pickney table for the shit's, for the park, and now the five hundred dollars. Should go along with the, what was already donated, uh, I think it's twenty-five hundred, right?
I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the five hundred dollars to go on the, uh, of twenty-five hundred to purchase, uh, pickney tables for the park, so we'll end up with three. I'll second that.
John made a motion?
Yeah.
To have five hundred dollars to purchase three pickney tables that Dave seconded, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Zero to pass, three to zero, pass. All in favor? Parking meter tickets.
I've made a motion, or I've talked to, here this week, I talked to Candy, and he asked me why we lowered. Parking violation tickets, I said, "Well, we did it." Well, my motion says we did, anyway, so, uh, for easy explanation, keep everything on the old ticket facility as it was, except moving the forty-eight hours to seventy-two, basically moving this bottom half back to the eight sixteen.
Okay.
But, but we. My motion, my motion, if you remember, I said, for easiness, make them both the same, but, you know, but Tharp convinced me that these should be higher, so, and I, I would not agree with him, so. Is that, is the forty-eight to seventy-two, that still, no, that's just after forty-eight to seventy? Seventy-two stays, will stay, that, for what my motion is going to be, the seventy-two will stay.
Okay.
After seventy, just change the bottom half back to the eight sixteen.
Yeah.
That makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense, Sander?
That sure does.
And then the handicap part, that stays, like it is.
Stayed, stayed.
Twenty-five.
I second that. Dave made a motion to, uh, to basically remane back to. What, what, what did you say a while ago? They made a motion, John seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Three to zero, pass. I only ordered parking meter tickets, with the seventy-two dollars on it, so. All right, that's, you got some new business, or it's open now to the public?
I just thought of something. I think it looks kind of happy when we have that pickup there on the square with the sign it out. You know, on the north side of the square, whether, it looks like we're having a continual yard sale or something.
The old pepperoni grill?
Yeah, yes.
Dr. Craven?
I just.
Lean it up on the back of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Have it on silent. Is it sensitive, it doesn't have a, a back to it, it, I, I know what you're talking about there, and I, I got tend to read, but I haven't thought much about it.
I don't know, we may not be able to do anything about it, I just think it looks tacky.
Well, I don't want. Leans it on the back of this truck, right, so it's not sticking out in the road, or taking up any extra parking space.
It's on the road leaning against the bump, the bumper of the.
That's what I mean, though.
It's in the parking space.
Within the parking space, it's not.
It's not out here to let traffic in.
And another thing I wondered is the new store is, has a sign, and I understand why they do, but I, I just wonder if we, you know, they bring it down and put it there at the crossing? I don't know, I wondered if there was somebody in a wheelchair. I don't know, I would.
What sign, what new, new store are you talking about?
Um, uh, from, um.
New antique store or?
Yeah, the new antique store, yeah. Yeah.
Or C T C.
They didn't, and, and, you know, it's, it's okay as long as it's not crossing, I don't know, I didn't, I just saw it, wondered if, if you were in a wheelchair, if you were, had to be, fine.
Or is that monitored and see?
So they would have to maintain forty-two inches to be ad hoc compliant in the sidewalk?
Well, and, and maybe fine, because it's got that curve, but still, I didn't know. It's just one of those white plastic.
So much wood signs.
Yeah.
I've not, like, what did, I've, I've seen, I've seen the sign, but it's, I didn't.
Well, I just, I had parked around there and, and walked around to Glen Town Hall the other day, and I thought, I, you know, I just kind of glanced, I couldn't, I didn't know. To me it was okay, but I didn't know how it would be for someone in a wheelchair, I didn't know.
There are several, several people, I mean, I, that I, I know just going up and down the street, most for the high-rise, I would assume, so I would think if it's too big an issue that maybe they would stop and say something. Probably go on the roof, in most cases, but we can take a look.
I mean, like I said, I didn't measure anything, I just thought, just.
Was that, you, you said the other side, if it's inside that parking space of the vehicle?
I don't know that, I mean, I don't know, I just don't know that we have any ordinance or anything that would address that. If it was sticking out in the road, not that you could clearly tell them to move it, if it was taking up more than one parking space, that you could clearly tell them to move it.
You know, the donut place, if you just have a sign that stick out in front of you, that's check.
Sander, if you want, it goes right out by, uh, security light, in, in between it and the parking area.
And if I was him and he told me to move it, not that I couldn't lean it against my truck anymore, I'd probably just fasten it to the back of my truck, which would accomplish the same thing, so, I mean, I don't know if there's anything you can do about it that's worth the trouble, I would think.
Is there anything else? Motion, we adjourn?
Second. They made a motion to adjourn, can I, John seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Two to four left.